The broadcast of the regular meeting of the Minneapolis City Council will now begin.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council. I'm going to call this regular meeting of the city council for May 15th to order. I'll note that this meeting has remote participation by members of the city council and city staff as authorized under the Minnesota Statute, section 13D point 021, due to the declared local public health emergency. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll so that we may verify a quorum for this meeting.
Councilmember Schrader.
Here.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Ellison. Councilmember Goodman.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Here.
Councilmember Conno. Councilmember Reich.
Present.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
Here.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Ellison. Councilmember Conno. Council President Bender.
Here.
There are nine members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Colleagues, the agenda for today's meeting is before us. Are there any amendments to the agenda from councilmembers? See you now. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
I don't think I technically moved to adopt the agenda. So, I apologize for interrupting, but I recognize, Mayor, before you call the roll, I can go ahead and move adoption of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Now, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Ellison. Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Conno. Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Ellison. Councilmember Conno. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are nine ayes.
That carries, and the minutes are adopted. Next, we have acceptance of the May 8th meeting minutes. May I have a motion for those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
That has been moved and seconded. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Ellison. Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Conno. Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Ellison. Councilmember Conno. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are nine ayes.
That carries, and those minutes are accepted. Next, we have the referral of petitions, communications, and reports to the proper committees. May I have that motion, please?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Ellison. Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Conno. Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Present.
Councilmember Ellison. Councilmember Conno. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 10 ayes.
That carries, and those matters are referred. But that will proceed to the order of new business, beginning with the mayor's weekly report on the state of our local public health emergency. Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Honored to be with you all for yet another Friday. We have been operating in state of emergencies in the city since March 16th. And as you know, on Wednesday evening, the governor announced that he will let the stay-at-home order expire on Monday, May 18th, so this coming Monday, and replacing it with a stay-safe order, a continued emphasis on staying safe at home and practicing safe physical distancing. Additionally, on Monday, retail businesses can reopen at 50% capacity with proper guidelines in place to make sure that they are accounting for public health. People can gather in groups of 10 outside of your family with the encouragement of using masks and being outside as much as possible. The governor also set the stage for at least a partial June 1st reopening of food services, including bars and restaurants, among other industries. And I want to be very clear here that we recognize that Minneapolis, as the largest and densest city in the state, has unique characteristics that need to be accounted for in public health decision-making. So while we have no intention to depart from the governor's decision as it relates to what happens on May 18th, we will continue reviewing the data and consulting with epidemiological and public health experts in determining what local regulations and precautions should be put in place. So it is, it's not lost on me that our neighbors of color have been hit particularly hard by this pandemic, and that an outsized share of workers affected by the order that would be going back to work or have been in work throughout this pandemic are low-income and people of color. We recognize that it is a privilege in so many ways to be able to work from home, and that reality needs to be recognized as well as we move forward. So at the city, we're presently figuring out how best to reopen, recognizing the governor's order and the unique circumstances that we presently face in Minneapolis. There have been 11 emergency regulations to date. I won't go into any of them, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. Now moving on to the health report by the numbers, that's as of 4:00 PM on May 14th, 2020. The total approximate number of completed tests stands at 128,725. That's 30,000 more than last week. As we know, this relationship between the governor's office, the Mayo Clinic, as well as the University of Minnesota, has a plan to ramp up to 20,000 tests per day. It's my understanding that we just recently hit our highest number of tests ever. We had been hovering and are hovering right around 5,000 a day, but those numbers continue to increase, which is good because making sure that we're able to test, making sure that we're able to trace, and then making sure that we're able to quarantine those that have had positive tests is still going to be of critical importance, especially as we reopen. Minnesota case information. Total positives are 13,435, which is up 4,000 from last week. The patients who no longer need to be isolated are 9,136, which is up 4,200 from last week. There have been 663 deaths, up 150 from last week. And deaths are among long-term, the deaths among long-term and assisted-living facilities are 537. So still the lion's share coming from both our vulnerable populations as well as our seniors. Hennepin County has seen 4,331 cases. And the number of healthcare workers that have presently been infected in some form are 1,605. As far as hospitalization, the total cases requiring hospitalization is 1,915, with 498 hospitalized as of today, and 203 that are presently in intensive care unit. And as we've stated previously, you know, these intensive care units are going to be of critical importance. You know, the, all this work, all this affirmative work, these aggressive measures that we've taken thus far won't necessarily reduce the total number of people that do in fact contract COVID-19, but it will help reduce the total number of people that contract COVID-19 all at once in a way that would overrun our hospital system. And so making sure that our hospital systems, our ICUs, and our ventilators are up, ready, prepared, and we have necessary supply is going to be critical, especially in the coming weeks. I believe I've gone over the Minneapolis cases, but if I somehow have not, it's a total, total case numbers are 1,478 in Minneapolis, which is up 500 from last week. 326 have been hospitalized, 341 have recovered, and tragically, there have been 95 deceased. Of those 95, we know that around 80 to 85% are in congregant care facilities and senior centers. There's a graph that you may have in your packet that relates to the Minneapolis demographic information. I won't go through it, but if you have any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer. For Health Department, contact tracing. The Health Department is conducting about 30 case investigations and contact follow-up for individuals diagnosed with COVID-19 per day. That's a whole lot of work because for each one of these case investigations, they then need to determine who they've come into contact with, and then find ways to prevent the spread from those individuals. Case loads may increase as 14 staff have been trained and another eight are in training. Human Resources is still working to identify staff within the city and outside of the Health Department that may be well-suited for this work. Cloth masks. Last week, 3,273 cloth masks from the Governor's Drive were distributed to 42 organizations and residents across our city. Health Department staff are responding to requests of 22,662 surgical masks for 48 healthcare facilities, including long-term care, homeless shelters, home healthcare services, as well as community clinics. An additional 25 groups and organizations have been identified to receive 2,409 cloth masks. And I'll note that even if you don't receive a cloth mask from this drive, these cloth masks can very easily be made at home. And I know that there are both YouTube videos that are available, as well as videos that our Health Department has helped facilitate and pushed out as well, showing you how to make a mask, how to get that set up. It's very, really very simple, and it's going to become increasingly necessary as a gradual opening takes place. And indeed, we're looking into the city as to how we can help facilitate and require that as well. Outreach to unsheltered. There are 200 individual sharp containers that have been provided as part of the outreach to unsheltered persons. 250 additional personal hygiene kits will be distributed in various locations and/or encampments in Minneapolis. And unsheltered persons with symptoms are being tested through Hennepin County's healthcare for the homeless program. Moving on to Office of Emergency Management and workforce.
Mr. Mayor, just briefly there, I just wanted to underscore a couple of things that you said on the last slide for my colleagues. In particular, the contact tracing work, as you said, this is very time-intensive and very staff-intensive, and I think it's one of the areas of COVID response where we're still figuring out the distribution of workload among the different levels of government. And so if, if the city of Minneapolis were to try to assume full responsibility for contact tracing, that would be an enormous cost to the city. So I just want to highlight that for my colleagues, so folks know that those conversations are happening and that that is, we don't want the issues around budget and staff time on the horizon. And as we've talked about many times, the response to folks experiencing unsheltered homelessness is another one of those areas where we have really strong partnership with the county. Right now, really, I think unprecedented. We've been building that relationship and that partnership for many years, and I think even more now. That partnership is really strong. But issues around who is testing folks experiencing unsheltered homelessness in particular, and in other vulnerable populations such as public housing, or, you know, workplaces, or, you know, larger apartment complexes in the city, those, those are still, those questions are still being worked out. And I think for us, it's again, this question of the push and pull of our budget related to how much money we do or do not receive from the federal government or other sources versus our own budget. So I just wanted to thank you for highlighting those things and wanted to expand a little bit for my colleagues on those two points.
Council President, I couldn't agree more. And the partnership that we have right now with Hennepin County, and additionally, St. Paul and Ramsey County, has been rock-solid. And it's enabled us collectively to get out the necessary services that we need to provide. And so, you know, thank you for all of your collaboration and work on that as well. On the topic of Office of Emergency Management and workforce, the city's workforce continues to maintain normal workforce strength and essential functions of government. The daily rate of workers on duty is consistently between 89% and 91% of the total workforce. Approximately 79% of workers on duty are working remotely, excluding police and fire. OEM's efforts remain focused on the awareness of trends, impacts, and the health of our residents and employees through a community strategy. Procurement. Total spend as of May 13th, 2020, and this is in terms of specific contracts, was $4,778,921. The total increased by $12,053 was for the purchase of gift cards by the Health Department for shared powers advisory committee members. I'll note that this number is very small in comparison with our total spend when you consider all of the work that we've put in at the city, the contracts that we've entered, the procurement that has occurred. You know, if you calculate that number, then you're up much higher, around $65 million. Finance and property services and human resources. As I mentioned earlier, the governor's stay-at-home order is expiring in some form on Monday, but they are still encouraging people to continue to work at home if they're able. FPS and HR have been working closely to develop the thoughtful enterprise-wide return-to-work plan, and each department has a template to complete and implement with their team. By the way, you know, this is not yet a mandate to return to City Hall, the City of Lakes Building, or any other city office building. It's an initial guide for us to think about how we safely return to a physical workspace as appropriate. And we'll be offering additional guidelines as we move forward on that as well. Budget. As mentioned last week, I am working on a revised 2020 budget. On June 12th, I will present a 2020 amended budget to council, and the goal is to complete this process by June 26th with adoption of the 2020 amended budget, noting that every day that passes until we make the necessary moves will result in much higher costs down the road. So the two weeks in between, the presentation of the budget and then the final adoption, we'll have hearings, we'll have budget presentation, we'll have markup. But I want to make clear, this revised budget will be focused on containing and eliminating costs, not adding to the budget. And so, as I mentioned, with every day we delay finalizing an amended budget, the city loses the opportunities to contain those costs to the tune of $900,000 each day, which is a staggering figure, but one that we need to recognize as we move ahead. And this is a, this is sort of the guideline as to where we're at now. And of course, I'll be working with, with council members and council leadership to determine how best to proceed, noting that you all have jobs to do to make sure that your constituents are engaged. You need to be able to delve into the budget itself to be able to mark it up. And yes, we most definitely will be reaching out to you.
Mr. Mayor, it looks like there's a question, and I did just want to comment just a little more on the council side of that process. So I sent an email yesterday, and also Councilmember Palmasano and I were able to follow up, I think, with every council member before this meeting. So our intention would be to re-establish the Budget Committee of the City Council, which is chaired by Councilmember Palmasano with Councilmember Fletcher as the vice chair. That will enable us to hold these meetings for the budget presentation, as well as the hearings, as we typically do in our process. So that would need to be adopted by an update of the resolution that established the council structure, which we just did not too long ago to shift to this new structure that we're in now. As a result of the extra meetings that would be needed to process the budget, I'm recommending that we shift to a two-week cycle instead of a one-week cycle with biz and our POGO and council meetings happening in a two-week timeframe instead of every week. And if you look at the calendar of necessary meetings, it becomes pretty clear that it would be very, very difficult for our clerks and communications and IT staff to support all of those remote meetings, not to mention the time on all of our calendars as well. So I think the pace of work has, is such that we can handle the workload in a two-week cycle. It will make our POGO meetings a bit longer. But I just wanted to mention that, and that would not be coming for a vote today, but I wanted to mention it. Mr. Carl has prepared the necessary documents for us to consider next week in the next week's cycle. So based on the questions and conversations that happen, we'll get that draft around very soon. And I see that there are a number of questions and comments from councilmembers, so Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Mayor. I, I am supportive of this idea of doing a revised budget. I really think that it's important for us to be kind of taking the revenue consequences of the pandemic head-on and really thinking about how we can manage that as wisely as possible. I think the, the timeline that you've proposed, Mayor, I think, well, we need to figure out a way, as you said, to do this quickly. I, I think there's a, there's a cost to delay. And I think that's going to require us to work differently than we have in the past. And I just want to sort of make sure that we're, as we think about, you know, how we move forward, I think it would be very difficult for the public to process and respond to in a public hearing in that two weeks if the first information that they get is on June 12th. And so I think it's going to be very important, and I know Councilmember Palmasano has already sort of voiced a desire to keep everybody informed more on the front end in a way, you know, in a way that wasn't the practice in the last couple of years necessarily. So I think it's very important that staff be working with the mayor's office, but also communicating to council, and that the mayor's office be communicating with council a lot more than we normally would as a part of the flexibility that we'll need in order to all move together as quickly as we need to move. So I just wanted to sort of, you know, voice that and voice a real desire in my Budget Committee role and just in my role in the council to really help communicate out what kinds of decisions are under consideration so that people have an opportunity to think them through and be able to meaningfully participate in a public hearing and meaningfully participate in the process of what's going to be a very important set of decisions and a very difficult set of decisions that we're all going to need to work together on.
Thank you, councilmember. And I'll just note, too, that in some of the conversations, I have mentioned this. So I am also pretty concerned about our ability to do the whole budget process in just two weeks. It sounds like it's not possible for a proposed budget to come before that June 12th date. And then the week after, the 26th, is what's marked in our traditional calendar as a ward work week leading up into the July 4th holiday. So July 3rd is a designated city holiday for city staff. I think we could push the final adoption a little bit into that week if councilmembers are amenable, giving just a few more days. But in just a short time, as two weeks, those couple of extra days may be meaningful. So that is an idea that I know I've talked about with a few councilmembers and wanted to offer to the group as well. And I see Councilmember Schrader in queue.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mayor. I, I think that this is, it is good to really, you know, face this head-on and really deal with the fiscal reality of where we are. I also share the concern that two weeks is not going to be enough time. Definitely understand the stakes. You know, every day, we are at risk of spending money that we don't have, and we need to face that reality quickly. We need to do that compassionately, and we need to do that fairly. And I think it'll be, I do one question, then just more comments. Just first, you know, if there's some way to get some of this information before the 12th, that would be extremely helpful. I think what's also, what concerns me is that, you know, with this process that usually takes months, we, we have a lot of back and forth, a lot of talks with department heads about really talking about the priorities of the city. And I think if it was something as easy as cutting some, cutting, well, you know, relatively easy as cutting some programs or things or contracts, that would be before us. I think those, these are going to be tough choices we're going to have to do in your budget. I think it is something, as the public's going to understand what is happening, they're going to need time to weigh in, to process what's going on, and also to understand a little bit more about how the city works. Like, it's something that we already are very efficient with their tax dollars. I think, I mean, I take my responsibilities as steward of the money very seriously, but I don't think people understand kind of all the, all the intricacies of how the city works, that, you know, we have the right amount of workers right now, that have the right amount of skills, that are working, I would say, at a much higher rate for much less compensation than they could get in any other sector in the city. And when we're, if we are looking at cuts in that area, these are people's lives. These are people that have given to the city. They've been out there on the hardest days of the year, making sure the city still works. So we need to really think about what, not just the, the cost savings, but the, the real loss that that's going to do. And I'm, while I understand the urgency, and I'll do my part to make sure that we can be done in two weeks, I want to just raise the concern that it might be longer than that.
Well, councilmember, I agree with you regarding the absolute need to make sure that we're protecting our extraordinary city staff. And by the way, that is the reason why we are moving so quickly. The more that we delay, the more money that is left out there. The more we delay some of these difficult decisions, whether it's around wage increases or freezes in terms of hiring, or procurement, or some of these programs that we've had at the city, the more likely it is that we will have to have substantial layoffs later. So I agree with you, but the reason and the way that we deal with that is by confronting this head-on now. And, you know, councilmember, I fully understand that this is not the normal process. Normally, councilmembers have months, literally months, to review a budget. They can ask any questions to our office. Our office can then respond with answers. That whole time period is now dramatically shortened. It's not shortened because we wanted it that way. It's shortened because that is what the times calls for right now. And when I gave direction as to how we wanted to handle some of the monetary issues we're experiencing, there's a few things that we were considering. First, we wanted to have council participation, and that's exactly why we're going through the second amended budget right now, which wasn't essential. Second, we wanted to make sure that we did something expediently to make sure we were saving as much money as possible. And so when I gave direction, I said, let's be able to present to the council as quickly as we possibly can. The date that was returned to me as the, as the date under which we would be able to present a fully complete budget was the 12th. If there was a way of doing it before then, absolutely, I would love to do that. And I fully understand that there are occasionally reasons why we might have to delay. I, I fully understand that we want to be able to engage the public. We want to make sure that everybody has all complete information. But we also want to make sure that we're saving as much money as possible, especially in times when money is so short. We are experiencing up to a $200 million revenue shortfall right now. The number has been going up almost daily. It was 100 million, then it was 130, now it's 165 million. And I would not be surprised within the next couple of months if it's gone up further. So I understand that there are constraints. I fully understand how that might be frustrating. But in the interest of our city staff, who are wonderful, in the interest of making sure that we can continue to deliver core city services for all of our residents, and in the interest of making sure that we're protecting those who are struggling most first, this is an action that we have to take. And so I very much look forward to working with all of you. You know, we've been, I've been in constant conversations with, with Council President, with Councilmember Palmasano, with Council Vice President about how we would sort of carry out this budget over the coming weeks. And, and I'm sure that I'll have conversations with each and every one of you to make sure that you are informed as possible, and I know that Heidi from my staff will as well.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kano.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you for confirming. I just, I have a different set of earphones today, so I wasn't sure. I just have a more of a logistical question. I'm sensitive to all of the timing issues and pressures and sort of the coming and going of dates. Curious either advice from the council president or the mayor, or perhaps the budget chair. What is the best way for our staff, our aides, to be able to capture all of these dates and make sure that they, you know, because I want to see all of these dates on my calendar. So just wanting to see if they should be looking for emails from the council president, Bender, or from budget folks in the mayor's office, or from our budget director, Mica, just trying to figure out like who we can zero in to make sure that, I don't want to miss a beat on this, and so I'd really appreciate just knowing where the centralized information will be coming from on all of the different dates for both the updated budget and also then the budget we have to approve later this year for next year.
Thanks, Councilmember. I can start and then maybe turn it over to the mayor and finance. So the information about the official adoption calendar would come from either myself or Mr. Carl in the clerk's office, and that would be adopted by the council in a resolution. If we can get to that point by next week, that would be the ideal intention so that we could publish that to the public. Any calendars related to budget preparation or coordination with council members or their offices, those communications would come from the mayor's office or from finance. And I, you know, I think I want to underscore a little bit a couple of points that have been made by colleagues in that, in the typical budget process, which takes many months, finance staff and department heads tell council members that we can't know anything about the proposed budget until it's like proposed publicly on the dais while we're sitting out there hearing the budget speech. And then we get a copy of the full budget. And so I think what I'm hearing from council members, just to underscore this, is if that is the case this time, it seems impossible to adopt the budget just two weeks later. But if that loosens and department heads and finance staff feel comfortable or able to talk to council members and their staff about budget requests or questions that council members might have, then it seems more possible while still very, very consolidated. So I think that's the point that some council members have been making about the information sharing. And so again, all of that kind of information would be coming from the mayor's office and finance, but the council schedule would come through our council process. Great. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this information. You know, I, along with my colleagues, you know, I would like to echo the concerns that were spoken of by my colleagues as well as council president Bender around the truncated timeline for the budget, while also obviously understanding the urgency of needing to be able to address the needs of the decreased revenue. One of the issues that we see, however, is that when we rush, when things happen quickly, there are often parts of the process that get thrown out. And one of the critical components that I have concerns about is how our values as a city, as well as particularly a racial equity analysis, will be applied in such a short period of time. So thinking about how does the money that will be cut, how will that impact investments in areas of concentrated poverty that have a greater majority people of color living in the area, how that impacts city employees of color? Those are the kind of concerns that I have because when you, when we look at dollars and cents, it can become very numerical and abstract in the human sense. And that level of intentionality around racial equity, it takes time and it takes expertise. And so, and I have tremendous respect for our budget and finance staff. So I don't want it to seem as though I do not have faith in their ability, but it takes multiple perspectives at the table to be able to have a thorough analysis, both from our values as well as specifically around racial equity. So I do have a question that I'll come back to, but I also just want to voice concern around the lack of Northside voice at the table. Neither council members from the Northside are in council leadership, are not budget chair or vice chair. And so as these conversations have been happening, the Northside voice has not been at the table. And the reason why I have a concern about that, again, is that our community already has experienced historic disinvestment from the city and still feels that presently. And so being able to have representation of our community at the table during these conversations, I believe is really critical to ensure that the investments and, you know, that racial equity analysis and really thinking about it from a geographic equity perspective as well is really important. So I do sincerely hope that we, as council members who are not in council leadership as well as in leadership of the Budget Committee, will be involved in this process, especially since it's such a truncated timeline. But I did want to circle back and ask the mayor, given that this is his proposal that he will be bringing forward. Mayor, how, what does a racial equity analysis look like during this phase of making cuts in the budget?
Council President, Councilmember Cunningham, thank you for the question. First off, I don't think that I should be the one to determine exactly what a racial equity analysis looks like in terms for cuts in the budget. I rely on people with lived experience, with communities of color, in determining how best to proceed. And it's good that we have already adopted a strategic racial equity action plan as guidance, and certainly that guidance will have some application during times of pandemic. But additionally, Councilmember, I very much would welcome input from you. As a Northsider, as a person of color, I'm sure that the input that you would be able to offer would be helpful, and so we will make sure to relay absolutely as much information as we possibly can so that we can then take those inputs, incorporate them into a proposed budget, and then there is time also for markup. So I don't pretend to have all the answers here. I certainly don't, but in this truncated schedule, we will do everything possible we can to put together a budget that lives out our values in reality and a budget that incorporates input from as many as we possibly can, recognizing that there are limitations in terms of timing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the conversation and share many of the concerns raised by my colleagues. One question I have is, are the department heads submitting amendments then to the mayor's office that will be looked at? And if so, when? And how can we make sure that the council members also see the recommendations that are coming forward from the departments?
Madam President, Councilmember Gordon, it's a different process than usual because this time around, we won't have budget change items like we do traditionally. There won't be any requests for additional funds. The pieces that we're looking at are simply how to improve efficiencies and then how to contain costs as much as possible. And so we're still working out the exact proposal, but like I said, we will engage as much as possible. This still is, this still makes sense to have a budget that I am able to present, yes, with input from council members, and then you are able to mark up, but as we can relay information, we certainly will.
Well, so I guess then the question is, who's actually determining and recommending the cuts to whom? And so I'm still unclear about that. I will say that as somebody who cares and has concerns about certain departments and believes in the professionalism and the expertise of the department heads, I would like to get their input and have time to get their input on what kind of cuts they think are manageable and what would the consequences be of certain other cuts and not doing certain programs. And so I think that we will need time to be able to do a good job. And I guess I'll have to work around figuring out how to schedule meetings so that then retroactively we can go back and get the input from the department heads if they're not initiating and recommending anything. But I would really strongly encourage finance and the mayor's office, assuming that might be who's leading on this, to include and reach out to the departments so they can give you some information about where they think there are savings, where cuts makes functioning of their departments.
Madam President, Councilmember Gordon, I didn't hear the very end of what you said, but I think I got the gist, and we've already done that.
Then my last thing is, how can I get that information then, to figure out what happened at those meetings or in those, under that analysis with the department heads prior to seeing the budget proposed? Is there a way to do that? Would my best bet probably be having one-off meetings with all the department heads and finance?
No, I don't think that makes a lot of sense right now, especially because we're on such a short timeframe and asking them to come back with as much information as possible. We've included several council members in these meetings, and that we can make sure to relay as much information as we possibly can to you. I want to be clear, there's no hiding the ball on this. There's no incentive to hide the ball. We want to get you as much information as possible so you're able to make a determination, but also the more information you have, the more obvious it is that these are really tough decisions. And so I have every incentive to relay that information to you, and we can do so as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Councilmember Kano.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to add to this topic of racial equity. I wanted to flag for policymakers and other elected officials who might be interested that this Sunday, there is a Local Progress call scheduled, I believe in Minnesota time. I believe it starts at 6:00 PM. And previously, I'm looking for the email now so I can forward it to you all, but previously when I had been in conversations with one of the staff members there at Local Progress, I believe they said that this Sunday's call, the topic would be around racial equity issues impacting the African-American community. I know that in the past, we already had one that focused a lot on undocumented families. And so I would just encourage folks who are interested in either learning more about that topic or operationalizing, actually lifting up some strategies and then operationalizing them into our city work, both from the mayor's office and from the city council side, to join that call this Sunday, May 17th. I believe it starts at 6:00. I'll forward you all the details once I have them. Perhaps the council president or council member Cunningham might already have some of those details and can share them too, just so that we can continue to support one another to make this racial equity conversation continue to live within the city and be responsive to our new context. And I know that racial equity is not a new thing for us. I know that a lot of us, including the mayor's office, has been working on this for many years now, so I'm hoping that we can just lean on these other resources to add some of that knowledge into the work we're doing around budgeting and decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to, on a second, Councilmember Gordon's can request for information from the departments. Two years ago, we were able to get the department proposals before the budget kind of came out, and that was extremely helpful. So just being able to get all that information as soon as possible is great, and I really appreciate your willingness to share that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments on this item? So again, for my colleagues, the materials on the council side will be coming through next week. I do want to say just a couple of things about that. First, it is my strong preference that we come together to agree on a process and a timeline with a firm deadline that we believe we can actually stick to rather than enter a process with an unknown end date or an intention to delay or postpone. And I think when we, when we do that, when we, when we have an unknown timeline or ambiguity about the end date, it becomes very difficult for members of the public to participate. And I know we'll do our best to hold these hearings in a remote environment. We've actually been getting really great participation from some community engagement at work that the city's been doing remotely. In some cases, I think more people are able to participate versus having public, you know, community meetings in the evening time. The remote, the remote meetings have been getting great participation. Most of them, I think, have been done by Public Works, but there have also been targeted calls with community groups, and I know that many of you have been a part of those. So I think, to me, once we make a decision next week on the calendar, I really encourage us all to feel comfortable that we can really stick to that unless there are extraordinary or extenuating circumstances, just as we normally do through our budget process. So if folks feel that that June 26th date is not possible, and we want to consider something that might end on July 2nd or something like that, even though I know that's not a huge amount of extra time, I think maybe what we'll do is kind of circulate those two different scenarios and see what the council thinks about a couple of different options. So I'll pause there and see if anyone has any questions or comments on this before the mayor moves on to the next topic.
If I could.
Oh, Councilmember Gordon, sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Since you asked clearly, I think July 2nd sounds like it's much more reasonable in light of the necessary background work we're going to have to do. So thank you for asking.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anything else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we are all set to move on, and I know there'll be lots of follow-up conversations about this as well. Thanks for everyone for digging in, and I know, as the mayor said, we're in a really difficult financial situation, so I know we will all work together to do our best to hold those values very strongly at the center of this work as we make those cuts that are becoming necessary. Thank you.
Well, and thank you, Council President, for your partnership throughout this. None of this is easy, and thank you also for both disseminating information, but I believe you and Heidi also have scheduled several meetings already with several different council members. I think Councilmember Gordon has a meeting, I believe, Wednesday of next week where we can start to disseminate as much information as possible, and I fully understand the need to get information. And it's a truncated schedule, but we'll do everything we can. Public safety. Auto thefts are up 51.4% year-to-date. It's a significant number. Many of these incidents occur while vehicles are left running or with keys in the vehicle. We were seeing this take place during the colder months, and at least in some form, it has continued into the warmer as well. We also saw 22 gun recoveries this week citywide. Year-to-date, 394 guns have been recovered, which is a 32% increase for the same time in 2019, which had 299 guns recovered. We also see 67, have 67 gunshot wounded victims year-to-date. This is the lowest total in the last five years for this time of year, but I don't want to undermine some of the other stats which have gone up. So as is often the case, this data is complex. As far as enforcement of the governor's stay-at-home order goes, to date, there remains no citations by MPD. Traffic control continues to provide an active presence in promoting physical distancing around small parks and school playgrounds. And from May 3rd to May 11th, there were 24 complaints at 14 locations for lack of physical distancing. Matthews Park and Bryant Square Park had multiple complaints during the last seven days. days, and you'll recall that Matthews Park was a hot location last week as well. The city continues to share information with the Minneapolis Park Board. And I also want to share a correction from last week, which I had messed up. So it was Regulatory Services that created the dashboards with the up-to-date information on hotspots where people are gathering, not IT, as was previously reported. So a big thank you to Reg Services. Obviously, IT is doing some extraordinary work in all facets of government right now as well, and I'm sure you've had more than a couple interactions with them over the last weeks. On fire, there was a fire in the early morning on Monday, May 11th, at the Tafik Islamic Center, which is located at 2900 Lyndale Avenue North. The fire was located in the entryway and crews brought it under control in about 10 minutes. Fortunately, the mosque was unoccupied at the time, and the fire was ruled as accidental to an electrical issue. As far as outreach and engagement, Minneapolis Fire Department is coordinating with MPS on Storytime with a firefighter, and it is available on the city's YouTube channel and on Minneapolis Public Schools website, promoting the videos to families. Children's books are being read in English and in Spanish, and Station 14 is working on doing a virtual fire station tour that will be available soon. Public Works will not be moving ahead with the Parker Program this year since it is designed to bring people together in closer spaces. Public Works will however continue to support using street space for health recreation and to support businesses, and are working closely with CPED on opportunities for outdoor dining space. This is something that I know several council members have been involved in. As restaurants, as bars are opened, how do we, one, take additional precautions, but two, allow for additional spacing requirements to prevent the spread? Moving on to state and federal activity. Last week of session, there...
Mayor, excuse me, Council Vice President has a question or comment. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mayor Fry. I wanted to just stay on public safety briefly and highlight the harassment and actual violence that has been experienced by Asian, by our Asian-American residents and bring that up for greater attention from our, from MPD, as well as our Communications Department on how we can better educate, highlight, and condemn these actions against our Asian-American community members. You know, I know that you and the chief did a video early on into this process, but maybe we can think about some kind of hotline or way that people can report these issues and we can be responsive to these concerns.
Thank you, Madam President, Council Vice President. To answer your question or your comment, I believe it was about, you know, we need to make sure we have a hotline to make sure that people can report both hate crimes as well as discriminatory activity. And presently, I believe those are in fact going through 311. I don't know if there's someone online who can comment to that extent. I did make a video about it earlier, and I'm just failing to recall the exact number. For crimes, obviously, you call 911. For other activities, perhaps it would be 311. Can either the chief or someone else comment on that?
Madam President, Council Vice President, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, yes. So you're absolutely right. 311 has been taking some of those calls, but to Council Vice President, your point, early on in the pandemic, when there was reports of some of our community members, particularly in the Southeast Asian community, who had been targeted, the Department of Public Safety had also set up a, I believe, a telephone number and also a website for community members who either had experienced some sort of targeting attacks because of their nationality or race. The Department of Public Safety was making sure that there was a communication system set up to document, report that. I have worked with also our Director, David Rubador's team as well, and had been on some of the Hmong radio programs as well, and some, all of our stations, just to make sure, local stations, just to make sure that folks are being kind and being considerate with our other community members and making sure that we are reporting any incidents of hate or bias. And so we continue to make sure we're monitoring that. Any calls, we did have a couple of calls early on in North Minneapolis that our Hmong community members had been targeted. We certainly went out there, responded, made reports, and then, of course, made sure that the folks who investigate the hate crimes from the federal department had those reports as well. So we will continue to reach out, be in spaces, to make sure that we're protecting all of our community members during this time and every day.
Thank you, Chief. I don't know if Director Corbell is on the line as well, but there's also a work group that's been formed on this particular area, including Civil Rights and NCR, City Attorney's Office, Communications, Health. There's several different people who are working on it. Director, I don't know if you're on, if you want to further comment?
While Director Corbell is hopefully getting on the line, yeah, my rationale for bringing this up is simply that can we get more communication, more information out to our residents and expressing this concern and providing information for people to report these incidents. I see Mr. Carl has included Minnesota State Human Rights Department Discrimination Hotline, and so just wanting us to really be cognizant and aware and communicative with our Asian community members around this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Mr. Mayor, Director Corbell is not on the call, but I know that there have been communications about this shared in the past, and I think we will follow up and make sure that all council offices have that hotline number that Mr. Carl has shared, as well as any other information that they can include in their newsletters and other communications.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam President. Next is state and federal activity. We're in the last week of session right now. The 2020 session must end by midnight this Sunday. Many omnibus policy bills are being heard or are scheduled to be heard by the deadline. Due to the remote nature of the legislature, leadership in both chambers are still requesting that bills reach an agreement between both chambers before coming to the floor for a And then for CARES Relief Fund Aid to Cities, which is obviously so critical right now, the House and Senate have designated five members to lead negotiations between the two bodies around how the state should distribute assistance to local units of government and appropriate to the state through the Coronavirus Relief Fund in the CARES Act. And our IGR staff have been working closely with municipal associations and providing the Minneapolis delegation members with information around the existing and foreseeable needs and costs of the city. I know that many of you, including Council President, probably every single council member, have been in contact with our Minneapolis delegation, and I just spoke with Representative Gomez this morning, and, you know, it sounds like we are very much on the same page in pushing for these essential funds. We participated in a call with members of that delegation, by the way, earlier this week to stress the importance. And in addition, I spoke with Commissioner of Revenue, Commissioner Bowerly, who is the governor's point person on the fund distribution, as well as Speaker Hortman just yesterday to share the same message. So rest assured, our message is getting out there. These funds are going to be so important. Like I said, you know, we've already have spent somewhere in the range of $65 million. Obviously, that doesn't include the up to $200 million in revenue shortfalls that we're seeing, as cities and counties are tasked with implementing so much of this relief. I think it makes sense that we do, in fact, get our fair share to enable us to do this very critical and important work. We very much appreciate, you know, council members, council leadership, and our Minneapolis delegation for advocating to that end, and appreciate the governor's office as well. Bonding?
Thank you. It looks like Council Vice President has a question or comment.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Mayor, is that a bipartisan committee, that five-member distribution committee?
Madam President, Council Vice President, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The bonding bill, unlike any other bill, must originate out of the House, and this past Monday, the House Bonding Committee Chair, Representative Murphy, released the House version of the bill. The $2.5 billion proposal includes critical projects across the state, including funding for, in some form, for all three city project priorities, including $20 million for Upper Harbor Terminal. Thank you, by the way, for all the work, you know, Councilmember Cunningham has, and many of us have put into that. $11 million for the central city storm tunnel. I know Councilmember Reich has been heavily involved in that. $1 million for the emergency operations training facility. While this is not complete funding for all projects, obviously, the storm tunnel in some form fell short. I believe that the figure being requested was in the range of $19 million. We're pleased with this as a starting place, and obviously, we can continue to advocate. The bonding bill also includes a number of other city priorities, including $14 million for capital funding for homeless shelters. Again, we need more there, but this is a good start. I know Council President has been advocating for that one. And $55 million for the completion of the B and D transit lines, which is an essential addition to our transit network. The Senate has yet to release their bill, and IGR staff are working with our delegation members on both. Contact tracing. Monday, legislation was approved appropriating $300 million to establish a contact tracing case investigation and follow-up program for COVID-19 cases. The program's purpose is to identify individuals who may have contracted COVID-19 and have them isolate until the contagion has been, has passed. So again, it's testing, followed by tracing, followed by isolation, and this is an area where the state and cities are going to need to partner in a big way, especially as we provide additional resources to allow for that tracing. The Minnesota Department of Health will manage the program but may hire other organizations and will likely, as I mentioned, partner with local health agencies. And our Minneapolis Health Department is preparing to partner with them on carrying out the program here. The legislation allows funding to be used for additional IT services, interpretative services, community outreach, and personal protective equipment for staff and for volunteers as well. Phase four of federal funding. On Wednesday, Speaker Pelosi rolled out the HEROES Act, which is a $3 trillion Coronavirus Relief Package. We're very excited to see this potential funding for cities included in the bill, and it's in a significant enough amount to offset some of our budget shortfalls. So additionally, the bill includes significant levels of funding for rent and mortgage support and safe and secure elections. There is still a long road towards passage, and the funding levels will likely not survive that process, but it does show an intention from Democratic leadership to support these essential issues. As I've mentioned, and we continue to collaborate with our county and state partners to support individuals experiencing sheltered and unsheltered homelessness, ongoing work is focused on how to support those residents and businesses in close proximity to encampments as well. And we know that unfortunately, the impacts often fall on communities that are already suffering from economic security in some form. On Tuesday, the Hennepin County Board weighed the option of purchasing a hotel to continue housing residents experiencing homelessness who are most at risk of contracting COVID-19. I know that Councilmember Fletcher was, has been looking into this issue as well, and the county is currently housing 750 individuals at five hotels throughout the county. The vote on this purchase was delayed to May 19th. I'm not going to get too much into the gap funding, but I can tell you that the distribution is going smoothly. The city received more than 8,000 applications for the gap funds for housing during the application. Email or mail notifications of next steps will be sent to all applicants this week, along with information on how to access other resources. The first 1,500 applicants will be referred to either MPA or the Community Prevention Partners on a rolling basis. Perhaps most exciting is that the very first checks are expected to be mailed during the week of May 18th, and then on a weekly basis, as applicants are approved, until all of the funds are expended. On the forgivable loan program, to date, a total of 117 total businesses have been notified of loan approval. This includes 63 businesses that were notified this week. The first batch of 54 have all signed documents, and most of their loans have been dispersed. The next batch of loan disbursements is anticipated this coming week. So we are really focused on three main categories of business, which is retail service, food-based businesses, producers, manufacturers, and then office downtown. And as you can imagine, those are kind of the four criteria that comprise most all. And we're going to make sure that as recovery and reopening takes place, we're doing so with a lens for both race equity as well as public health, two very critical items in making these decisions. So I'm going to stop there. Thank you all for your partnership. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Mayor. I see one question. I did also just want to mention briefly on the gap funding piece that Hennepin County has also now approved both rental assistance and business support. I think an initial amount of funds were made available only to suburban communities in Hennepin County, but later this month, a new round of funding should be available to support folks in Minneapolis, both through rental assistance as well as small business support with those funds that the county has made available. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender, and thank you, Mayor, for this presentation. I think on your last slide, thinking about reopening, I think it's, I've been getting a lot of questions this week about how to protect workers. And I know that under the stay-at-home order, it was something that we were directly able to consult with the critical businesses because there were a small enough number of them. And so in some ways, the systems that we had in place now have to scale up, and we have a really important role as the region's workplace, as businesses start to reopen, to, you know, I think, make sure that between us and the state, that there's adequate guidance to employers about how to open their workplaces safely, and I think maybe even more importantly, about how to empower workers to assess whether it's safe for them to come back to work, to sort of communicate out the tools, you know, because I think people are starting to ask questions about like, well, how do I know if I'm breathing recirculated air or not? How do I know, you know, if the right safety precautions are being taken? And so I'm just wondering what, you know, if you can speak a little, I know that public health is working on this, and so I just, whatever you can share about what we're doing to try to empower employers to protect their employees and empower workers to advocate for themselves, I think that's a critically important issue for us as we start to shift to a new set of rules.
Councilmember Fletcher, I couldn't agree more. Councilmember Fletcher, I couldn't agree more. As some form of gradual reopening takes place, we want to make sure that both our workers, and our employers for that matter, and those that are visiting businesses are protected to the utmost. And so we presently are doing quite a bit of research to determine how best to both offer guidelines in terms of how businesses can and should function, but also regulate. And, you know, there are, there are several plans that are, that are presently in place. But, you know, one facet that we are actively considering is a requirement of wearing masks in indoor public locations. If we want to protect both workers as well as business visitors, we want to make sure that there is some form of criteria that people can expect, that, that people have a semblance of an understanding of what they can expect when they go into a business, be it retail or, or office, or restaurant, or bar, you name it. We want people to both be safe and feel safe. And so there, there are several pieces that are being actively explored right now. I don't want to prematurely make an announcement because we're still doing a bit of research on these topics. And like I said, I'm not an epidemiologist. I'm certainly not a public health expert. But I do listen to people that are. And we're going to, we're going to be compiling some data in the coming days and weeks to offer both guideline as well as potentially regulation. So, you know, I'll, if, Council President, are there any further questions? If not, I can just conclude.
I don't see any. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, everyone. You know, this is, this is the first economic downturn that most of us has, have been through, probably with the exception of, of Councilmember Goodman, who has experience undoubtedly in that area. And this is an area, this is a time when we're all very much going to need to work together. And so I so appreciate your partnership, and I look forward to the work ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for everyone who contributed to the summary of work we've heard today. If there are no objections, I'll ask the clerk to file the mayor's report, and that will bring us to the reports from our standing committees. The Business Inspections and Zoning Committee didn't meet this week, so that leaves only the report from the Policy and Government Oversight Committee. Now, I'll recognize Council Vice President Jenkins to give that committee report.
The Policy and Government Oversight Committee brings forward 17 items. Item number one, two, and three approve specific street resurfacing projects and related assessments as noted on the meeting agenda. Item number four approves liquor licenses. And item number five approves gambling license renewals. Items number six and seven authorize legal settlements described on the agenda and authorize the city attorney's office to execute necessary documents. Items number eight and nine authorize contract amendments with existing partners for legal services and for proactive labor standards, outreach, and vulnerable worker liaison services. Item number 10 is a contract for sublease office space in the North Minneapolis Career Force Center for Employment and Training Services. Item number 11 is a contract amendment for the East Side Maintenance Facility Fuel Depot Project. Item number 12 authorizes a grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice for DNA testing of backlog untested sexual assault evidence kits, as well as the investigation and prosecution of cases with DNA evidence results. Item number 13 authorizes a grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice for coronavirus emergency supplemental funding. Item number 14 authorizes an amendment to a temporary construction easement agreement for New Water Main near the 10th Avenue Bridge. Item number 15 is a contract amendment with safety signs for rental of traffic control devices. Item number 16 is acceptance of the low bid for Bridge Number Nine Pier Six and Seven Repair Project. And item number 17 is a gift acceptance of loans under the city's forgivable no-interest loan for small business programs. I move all items for approval.
Thank you. Council Vice President has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. At the POGO meeting, we had the presentation from the Health Department around the grants being allocated. There was a $100,000 pool of money that was allocated to organizations that were in, addressing, that were responding, excuse me, to COVID-19 needs across the city. And a few council members expressed concerns around the, what, what felt, what seems as though a lack of a racial equity analysis, particularly given, as we saw with the numbers of demographics, that the, that black folks are being disproportionately impacted. We did not have any black-led, black-serving organizations, nor northside-specific organizations. And overall, they were very large organizations rather than small, community-based organizations that, that really are doing the work and know the community well across the entire city. So I have brought forward a staff direction, but wanted to pause so that the Shared Power Advisory Committee through the Health Department had the ability to meet and discuss the timeline of their work so that those two things can happen in tandem. And according to Commissioner Musicant, the timeline that we had discussed on Wednesday does work. So, so I have sent to everyone, including the clerk, our, what I'm bringing forward today. And so I'll just go ahead and read it out. So this is a motion to direct the Health Department to report back to the POGO Committee within three cycles on how a racial equity analysis will be applied and the allocation of funding to community-based organizations. And I just, all right, so folks are saying that they have not received it, so let me try that again once, once I finish. My apologies. So the, I just want to share that the logic is that the Public Health Department is so incredibly critical, obviously, during this public health crisis. And so we want to make sure that while things are rushed during an emergency like this, that we are also still putting intentionality around how racial equity is being, being applied, and be able to do so with fidelity even during the crisis. So I will resend that to folks, and, and I make that motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham has moved a staff direction to accompany the item from the Health Department's grant program. Are there any questions from council members or any discussion on any of the POGO items? I don't see any. So I'll go ahead and take up that staff direction vote along with the other items, unless anyone has any objection to that. Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham. Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and those items are adopted. The next order of business is the introduction and referral calendar. We have one item today, and that's a motion from Councilmember Cunningham to introduce, give first reading to, and refer to the Business Inspections and Zoning Committee, the subject matter of an ordinance enlisting the Housing Maintenance Code, to add provisions requiring payment of tenant relocation assistance following a revocation or cancellation of a rental dwelling license. Is there any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that item is referred to the Biz Committee. Next, we have the Order of Resolutions, and we have one honorary resolution today, and that is the honorary resolution that declares, oh, pardon me, this is, sorry, oh, yes, sorry, I mixed this up with the Public Service Week. I'm going to go ahead and continue reading the agenda. So we have the Order of Resolutions, and we have one honorary resolution today. That is the honorary resolution that declares May 17th to the 23rd as Public Works Week, with the year marking its 60th anniversary of this special national designation. And before we take action, I'd like to invite our Public Works Director, Robin Hutchinson, to offer some remarks about this resolution.
Good morning, Council President Bender, and good morning, the entire city council and the mayor. Thank you so much for honoring our Public Works employees, especially now as they provide stability and service to our community. I want to thank you all for supporting our teams. Your support is felt by all of our employees, from the water treatment operators to our sign installers, to our folks who maintain vehicles, who plan ahead for the future of transportation, who keep our waterways clean, and really, all of our employees in Public Works, they feel your support. So thank you very much. I share your support and enthusiasm for my team, and I look forward to being able to celebrate our work along with you all week next week.
Thank you, Director, so much. Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President, and I certainly would share the gratitude to the employees that was announced by the Director Hutchinson. And in the resolution, you'll note all the work that we, of course, appreciate and know is so important, but the one whereas clause that highlights how Public Works contributes to the city's health seems rather poignant in these times, and I just wanted to highlight that aspect of the resolution, which embeds additional work that we're all familiar with when we think of Public Works, and extend a personal thanks to the department.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Reich, and I echo both of your sentiments. This is often work that can feel invisible sometimes, but we all rely on our Public Works employees so much, from turning on the tap and getting clean water to our sewer system, our store water system, our roads and bridges, and we're so very thankful. Are there any other comments from council members about the resolution? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Aye.
Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that honorary resolution is adopted. Finally, we have the Order of Announcements. Are there any announcements from council members? Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Council President, and I see that Councilmember Reich put himself in queue, and we may be offering the same announcement. We didn't coordinate in advance, but just want to really acknowledge that one of the things that makes Minneapolis, Minneapolis for many of us is Art-A-World. It's one of the just incredibly special, and it's, it's one of the best art exhibitions in the country. And we're all going to miss it deeply this year, and I just want to note that they are doing an online version of it, and that for some of us, we're missing a social experience, and we're missing a cultural experience, we're missing the opportunity to walk around and enjoy it. And for some of us in our community, for some artists, this is their Black Friday. This is where they make their year. They really build their production schedule around gearing up for Art-A-World, and this is where they make a lot of sales. And so if you are someone who is interested in enjoying culture and art, they are doing an online version of it. You can go to NEMA.org and see all of this art on display, and hopefully, buy some and help people continue to work and thrive as artists in our community, and take some real enjoyment and pleasure in the great cultural offerings that our city has. So don't let the pandemic cancel Art-A-World for you. We'll do it virtually this year. We'll look forward to coming back together for the biggest and best celebration of arts and culture anywhere in the country next year and for many, many years after that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President, and my colleague, Councilmember Fletcher, is correct, but Art-A-World ritual or otherwise is so big, it does need two announcements. It's just a ritual that we always do. But yeah, the Northeast Minneapolis Arts Association, NEMA, and they will be launching that starting at 5:00 PM. And, and I'm glad the qualifier "one of the best" shifted in Fletcher's announcement to "the best," and I think that is correct. And also, I would just urge you not maybe consider buying art, but maybe really, truly consider buying some art, and enjoy your weekend. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Ellison.
Happy to see the arts getting a major shout-out today. I wanted to make an announcement as, as elections chair, and I'm pleased to share with my colleagues that the Minneapolis Public School District has stepped up and agreed to have our elections team use their facilities to host 27 polling locations for both the August primary and the November general election this year. That's incredible news because it will mean that our voters will have access to well-known, community-based spaces that are accessible and large enough to accommodate the health and safety guidelines for voting sites that have been recommended by the CDC. Also, the schools have been, there are classes going on, and so the likelihood that voters will affect students or students will affect voters is, is not there, so that's another really great reason. I know our elections crew is very happy to receive that news, and we will have a bigger report on their initial plans presented next week at the POGO meeting, but I wanted to share some good news this Friday, and really thank our school district and its leaders for being democracy champions and partnering with us to make every voter have access to the ballot box this year. So that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellison. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I was just wondering if Councilmembers Fletcher and Reich could help us get the word out about Art-A-World electronically. I have a newsletter going out today, and I know others do too, and I would be honored to put that information right at the top of my newsletter so folks would know how to click onto the link in order to consider looking at and purchasing art, but I don't have a good way to tell people how to do it. And maybe the city could be helpful in some sort of press release as well. I think at this point in time, even nonprofit partners and other organizations need us to help get the word out, and I would be happy to do it if there was a simple way that we could get it out. So thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from council members? Thank you all so much. With that, we've concluded all of the items on our agenda for this meeting. Seeing no further business before us, without objection, I will adjourn our meeting. Thank you.